I'd like to call to order the township North Huntington Board a Commissioner's Special Meeting for Thursday, February 14th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Sylkon.
Commissioner Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Velasco.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Casera.
Here.
Commissioner Haigus.
Here. Could everyone please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign the book at the podium. Thank you. We have one resident tonight that would like to speak, Don Torowski Jr. Just come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record, please.
Don Tor- Don Torowski Jr., 8954 Hill Drive in North Huntington. I handed you some information this evening. Wanted to come up and give you an update on Huntington Marketplace, on everything that's happening by Walmart. I talked to a couple of you guys and gave you sporadic updates, but wanted to give a more concise update of what's happening there. Today, you see the shell permit that Andy's office awarded under construction. There's no interior fit-out permits just yet, as we are waiting to do the execute the developer's agreement and move forward on it and the securities. But also on the other end of development, just put tilt sock in place for, of course, the Goddard School that you guys approved, which was, I believe, two months ago. In addition to that, of course, as always, things can't happen in phases. Everyone wants to come at once. Once they hear announcements, one come, they all come. So I have on the corner piece, the largest parcel across from Walmart in entertainment use, that is close to lease execution in the next two weeks, which is near, what do we think? How big was it, Andy? We talked about it, sixty, sixty-three thousand, I think, square feet. In addition, on the side is another ten, so about seventy thousand square feet on that largest parcel. But in addition to that, I have two parcels on Lincoln Hills around the corner, on Ronda Court, and I have two additional office users that I'll be in here soon with site plans and discussing them. So everything, there's a lot of good happening in that corridor. Davey, you're award, a lot of, a lot of great stuff happening there and looking to look elsewhere in the township. I have in Andy's office, two months ago, a site plan for discussion on the Pennerwood Motel. I know you guys have seen that before, trying to revive that deal and clean that up in addition to all this. So, a lot going on, and I hope, in a sense, that the bonding concerns that we have with Mr. Blanco and Jeff, we've had discussions. They're cumbersome, and in past months, or in past years, we didn't bond public, or, excuse me, we did not bond private improvements, we bonded public improvements. Of course, roadways and residential plans get bonded and other items. We don't specifically, on the corollary, bond private home sites. On the same token, we don't typically bond everything that there is to do outside the building walls of a shopping center, because you guys wouldn't, in a sense, take dedication of a retail parking lot, nor would you maintain it, and nor would you, I may venture to say, and Mr. Solicitor can correct me, if it isn't completed, you wouldn't pull the bond and complete the parking lot, stop the lights on my behalf. So, the bonding amount is really what's in question as we move forward. I need funding, of course. This is going to turn into a fourteen million dollar project, just on Mills Drive, in addition to some other things. So, I'm hoping that, and I don't, of course, up for discussion, any questions you guys have. I don't expect an answer now, by any means. I provided you with the same thing Andy's showing you here. But in addition to that, I went a little further than just that section. 3051A, as you can see on the second sheet, and you guys can review that at your leisure. It refers financial security to public improvements. And then, on the corollary, on the last three sheets, you see those amounts that I'm seeking to secure. So the first page, the forty-three thousand dollar amount, is the Goddard School, which, Andy, you have not seen yet, because I just got those a couple of days ago. The hundred and fifteen thousand is the building that's under construction now. I do agree, of course, reading through the SADO and the MPC, that landscaping and some other items do fall under that bond. Those improvements need bonded, and of course, I'm willing to do so. And of course, the last page, the two hundred and two thousand, is Jeff, you and I had discussed that detention system that needs bonded. So that's that two hundred and two thousand dollar number there. So, any questions? I just wanted to present this. Sorry I couldn't get you this sooner so I could be on the agenda. This wasn't completed just yet, a lot going on. So, thank you. If there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any board discussion or questions? Alright, thank you. Let the record reflect, that's the end for citizens' input. Moving on, work session discussion topics, Manager Sylkon.
Okay, I have a few items to discuss tonight. The first two are revisions to our personnel policy. The first is the working out of classification po- policy revision. This kind of came up whenever Mr. Blanco went on extended leave, is that our policy states that if an employee works, this applies to non-union, anybody not covered by a bargaining agreement, that if an employee works out of classification for more than two consecutive days, they get paid either five percent or above their salary, or what is the bottom base for the salary, for the position they're covering. Now, what got me a little bit, you know, scratching my head, is that we have people who are paid to be assistant directors and associate directors of departments, which is, as part of their duties, is to fill in when the, when the director is not there. So to me, that two-day policy is a little bit short for assistant directors to fill in. Basically, if somebody would go on a conference, you know, you would be paying advanced pay. So what I'd like to do is keep the policy the same for non-management employees, but anybody with the position of assistant director or associate director, have that changed from two-day consecutive days to ten consecutive workdays. That way, we know we're now not in a vacation, we're in a extended period where that person's going to have to step up and do the higher duties on a more consistent basis.
Looks good. Any questions from the board?
Okay. The second one, and I want to stress, this is the military leave policy that we've, you know, learned to read over. I believe that there needs to be a construction change. There's no language change, it is simply moving the township's responsibility to pay the difference between the employer's military pay and the his or her normal township pay from the employees' responsibility section to the township's responsibility section. So it's moving it from term E under the employees' responsibility section to term D under the employer's responsibility section. As I should, within the policy, same language, it's just, that is an employer's responsibility to pay the difference, not an employee's responsibility. I think it makes for a clearer, cleaner policy, just to revise that construction.
The only question I have, Manager Sylkon, is under here on 2C, we have a hundred and twenty hours per year, and then fifteen days. Well, downstairs, they work twelve-hour days. So which is it? Is it a hundred and twenty hours, is it fifteen days? How are we going to define that?
I believe that the, the hours is from the, from the legislation.
Okay.
Not from, from hours. I'd have to look into, but I believe that is coming from the legislation.
I'm just asking if maybe we need to clean that up, because it isn't, the hundred and twenty hours would only be ten days of their workday.
It's, it's the other, I think it's the other way around. I think fifteen days is the legislation. The hundred and twenty hours was ours.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty hours, but I believe it's fifteen days per the state law.
Yeah, fifteen days is, is normal.
I just don't want to get into litigation with this.
I, I think you just get rid of the hundred and twenty hours, we leave fifteen, fifteen military, fifteen days. Because a typical annual, a typical annual training period is fifteen days, typical.
Okay, but then what are we going to do if they go back to ten-hour days, or go back to eight-hour days?
It doesn't matter.
It's days, it's workdays.
Days.
Workdays.
That was the...
Okay, well, I just don't want to get into any more litigation.
I think that's clear, it's clarified in, in the Act. It says days, doesn't matter what time, how much hours work. I think that was Act 88.
I believe it was, was.
Yeah, Act 88.
I might have a copy of it.
We can, I guess, just take a look to see what that Act says, and we can reflect what that is.
Yeah, we want to do, talk it with Bruce, and we'll decide then, you know, if it is, I'll arrange it to be clear, that it's a fifteen days is probably the clearest.
While we're changing things, I would just like to get that cleared up also.
Yeah, I'll email it out, you know, before the meeting.
Any other questions? Thanks. Okay.
Next on my list is the Westmoreland County Request for a Resolution to Support of the Comprehensive Plan. This came, right as I was putting the packets together on Friday, or actually on Thursday, to get out. What they're asking is municipalities to support or pass a resolution that they provided a draft to support the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to put it up for discussion if the board is, wants to see that on the It's not, it is basically not obligating the township to anything other than saying that the plan's in place and it's, as municipality, we'd work to support it.
I personally would like to put it off for a while. I've been getting some input from, actually, I had to download the, the plan, and Jason Rigoni had to help me with that, because somewhere there was some spyware in there, Westmoreland County thing, and I couldn't download it, but then he did send me the link to it. And I would like to read it further before we vote on it, because I don't think enough people really know what's going on with it. And I also talked to Daniel Carpenter, and he said that so far, only five municipalities have resolutions turned in. So I would like to see what other people are thinking about the plan before we go ahead with it, maybe get some citizens' input on it.
Has anything really changed on it? I mean, or is it basically the same as it was?
No, it's, it's a much different plan. I mean, it's, it's more of a modern, let's say, sustainable-type plan, whereas older plans would have more concrete, you know, governmental functions. This is increasing diversity, trying to get intergovernmental cooperation, kind of forcing it, taking the county into planning districts, kind of taking lead municipalities and building the smaller ones around them. There's not, there's, you know, the plan probably isn't as workable as you think it, as they think it's going to be, because of, of the goals really aren't goals that government can accomplish, they're more of societal, social-type goals to accomplish. There's a lot of, you know, as I read, there's a lot of stress on larger municipalities kind of pulling the wagon for some of the smaller municipalities. So, you know, I think there are concerns if you read it from, from different perspectives.
I just, what Fran has said is what I'm hearing across the board. I mean, there's a lot of municipalities that I don't think are going to get on board.
Are not going to get on board with this. I'll use, I think it's idealistic. That's very, that's a nice way to say it. I think you, you should take some time, you know, you can certainly bring it back up next month and the month after, but I, I, I think it'd be worth your while to take some time to look at it.
That's basically their plan, correct? I mean, what they want to do, and they just, they want us to be like a spinoff, so to speak.
Oh, they want you to support it.
Right, well, yes. You know, the one thing about county plans in Pennsylvania is the counties really have no authority, no resources, and no provision to serve, so it has to line on, lean on the municipalities to kind of perform most of the tasks and get the goals done, simply because of the way we're, we're structured as a, as a bottom-up state through the Constitution.
Okay, wait.
Is that consensus is the way to support? Yep, okay. The next item on the agenda is our DCNR grant update application. I think, you know, we've gave all the presentations we could possibly give on the master planning, the phasing of the park process, and it's time to get a grant application in together, into the state, as we have to have it in by April 10th. And through the, through the work group that we've had, we've taken to a Phase One, and taking feedback we had from DCNR and from our consultant, especially on a first draft application from a township, they're going to take a look at our public comments, and our public comments greatly ask for trails throughout the park. So what we did is we had Phase One come up with, with the parks, the trail around our park, you know, Ocolo, and it's roughly a five thou- five hundred thousand dollar project, which we would get fifty percent funding through the grant, we would match fifty percent. Now, this is, we're going in with high expectations through, as we've said before, through the evaluation rounds, we could get pared back, and this Phase One allows us to pare back without impacting the greater, the greater project. So this is, we're hoping, but we know that DCNR will test us, as we're a first-time municipality, if they do fund us, they're not, they're probably not going to fund us a hundred percent right out, about two hundred and fifty thousand. So what we're going to ask for is the Board of Commissioners to grant a resolution at the, at the meeting on Wednesday, to allow us to submit this grant application.
I have a couple of questions, like the trails and everything. Who, are, are employees, parks and recreation going to be in charge of maintaining these trails and that, as far as cutting and brush back and cutting? I mean, I don't think we have enough people to do what we're doing in the parks.
Well, we would, it's, it's our parks, it's our trails, we would have it, you know, and what we, what we do is, this is, you know, we'd get the grant, it would probably take, you know, two years at least to get everything done, and we can take a look at staffing, we can look at how we deploy our staff. But, you know, the trails are, are going to be a mixture between bituminous and natural surface. To say that we have enough, you know, we are, we've invested in some technology, some brush cutters, some, some things that do things, the work of, you know, you know, the vent truck mower that we cut the, for an hour, we cut the hillside here, it would have taken a four-man crew the day to do it, conventional.
Yeah, it looked good.
So we are taking some technology upgrades to allow us to work more efficiently, but it's not to say that, you know, overall, we may have to look at workforce deployment.
I just, I just have some concern, I don't know if we have the manpower to maintain, you know, all this, what we're thinking about doing. That's just my concern, and I just think, you know, I'd like to hear what Dan has to say about, you know, some things too.
And just, you know, with workforce, we know that, you know, majority of the work is going to be when we do have our summer help, assigning more summer help to the parks, so to avoid, you know, assigning more full-time people, but also maybe deploying some public works people to help out, you know, do the grass during, for our high seasons.
I had some questions for Dan Millard, you know, here, so, ready to get him on the phone.
Yeah, he will be here Wednesday.
Okay, I want to expand a little bit on what Dave had to say. You know, we're looking at a grant that we would have to match for two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand for each year. Couple of things we've got to keep in mind. First, our current reserve fund is shrinking. We went from seven million dollars down to three million dollars. Our cost and upkeep for the township infrastructure continues to grow, playing catch-up on the roads, which we allotted five hundred thousand, landslide, sinkholes, stormwater, flooding, and drainage problems. We don't know what the future cost is on all that. We just took a loan from the state to address the Haywood Roadslide. Keep in mind, we have to pay it back, with the weathers or possibility of more slides and more problems. Rising costs associated with upkeep of our public safety needs, it needs to be maintained. We are in the process of adding four more officers to our police department. We've added administrative cost with the new tracer program, new financial software, new technology, the cloud, Civic Plus and the consultants and contracts and upkeeps, or what cost. Personal costs along with added personnel has added to the budget already. We've been fortunate over the years to secure funds from the parks with the fee and lieu of, and the general fund, to keep up the parks, projects, upgrades, and improvements. However, let's face it, the building in the township is dwindling. Those fee and loas are going to be going down. That might be something we want to revisit to try to get some more money, maybe raise those. And we've made a lot of improvements in our parks over the years. Indian Lake Pavilion was installed at two hundred thousand, I believe was the cost on it, playground, hiking trails, fitness equipment, and just recently, the parking lot down at Indian Lake. At Ocolo, a new soccer field, sanitary line, new playgrounds, six hundred thousand in playground upgrades, cornhole courts, and a sixty-five thousand dollar new restroom facility is planned for this year. This is all in our budget. Lions Park will see a hundred and twenty-five thousand this year, with the trail project and baseball fields that was formerly provided. Tinker's Run, we're talking about putting bocce courts in. That's just to name a few. That and the signage you were looking at is another sixty thousand dollars. All of those projects are already budgeted, in our budget, for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The process that was explained to us, starting with the strategic plan in 2017, then revised in 18, and now the master plan in 19, has provided us direction. Excuse me, but I'm getting older, I have to do notes.
You know, I'm glasses, anyway.
Okay. So, you know, what I want to ask is a bigger question. Can we travel this road with our current staff and department, like Dave said? These same plans called for growing the department and not just the amenities that are being requested. New amenities will include added demands on our workforce and need for more positions, all with added cost above and beyond the matching grant and the cost of this plan. Over and above the initial cost of the grant match of two hundred to five hundred thousand, we are looking at a strain on the budget for added labor, maintenance, upkeep, utilities, and materials, added duties. We've added, like, the high grass accounts onto our Parks Department, and just their basic day-to-day operations. We're putting too much of our current labor staff, which is, I believe, three point five employees, and some seasonal help, like Jeff had stated. There's already a safety issue, as Commissioner Bertani and I have brought up in the past, where you sometimes have one worker up there on machinery. What happens if you end up with a medical emergency? I think we need to explore other avenues for funding. There's been a mention of Gaswell Realities, maybe revisit the fee and lieu funding that I brought up. Also looking for state and federal programs to assist with the other departments, freeing up some money that could go into something like this. Remember, if we apply for the grant and it's approved, two hundred and fifty thousand, or five hundred thousand, we have to match. If at that point, we can't fund it and say, "No, thank you," what do we look like? I, I think we're kind of putting a horse, or the cart before the horse on this. We've proven and showed improvements over the years, working within our means. If we continue with this resolution, we will definitely be looking at spending our reserve down and a tax increase in the future. I'm suggesting putting the master plan on the shelf and to use it to our advantage when considering new park upgrades, when fully funded, and maybe in phases rather than individualized as funding becomes available. That's all I have to say about this plan.
Well said. I just like to add a couple of things with Dwayne said. We, we always used to have five people in the parks up there, and one gentleman retired, and we never replaced him, so, well, we're down to three, to the unfortunate thing with Mike Waters. But I think we need to look at, you know, putting another person in the parks if we're going to, you know, continue to improve the parks, and I think they've done a good job improving the parks, you know, as far as different improvements to the fields, updating the equipment that we have. I just think in the fee and lieu, I mean, we could up that, you know, by a hundred dollars or whatever, you know, two hundred dollars. I know business people don't want to hear that, the builders and that, but, I mean, I just think there's other ways we can, you know, possibly look at, you know, improvements. And I don't think none of us are against recreation or hadn't, but there's some parks too, I think we need to eliminate, and I think one of them is Jacktown Acres, and some of the smaller parks are just, there's, there's nothing happens there except for, you know, getting flooded all the time. So, and that's Brian's area, and I don't want to step on his.
No, you actually took the words out of my mouth, because the same thing, I look at that neighborhood park, and I see very little use out of that, and that's, we have to explore, are we going to go towards the community parks, are we going to go to the neighborhood parks? And every time I go down there, the stream is flooded over, it's muddy, the equipment's old, it's dangerous, and as I've mentioned before, I'd love to see the updates in the parks and recreation, as you said. I don't think anyone here would be objected to advancing on that, but I spoke out against the, the cost of the feasibility studies, because I thought that was outrageous, and yes, the potential of the grant is very alluring, but there is that maintenance cost, there's a lot of cost associated with it, and, you know, I'd prefer to look to establish some partnerships with the school district, get some sponsors from Exella, you know, people have money, they want to throw their name on it, here, here's some money, let's build a new pavilion this way, we'll call it the Exella Medical Pavilion, whatever. But I agree with Dwayne, too, we, we have to watch financially that, you know, we're not throwing any more burden on taxpayers here, because they're getting hit from every direction and...
Especially from the school.
Absolutely. So we have to maintain our fair share, but I, I agree. I love the ideas, but I think we have to do it in stages. Just the cost scares me, and still, we're not offering anything to our senior citizens in the township. With the deck hockey that's on here, I don't know if I even saw that in the survey, I'm not sure how some of these ideas came up. And there are some infrastructure improvements absolutely necessary, but some of this stuff, I think, can be sidetabled for a better time of day.
I think some of the parks we're talking, like, you know, Lions Park, there's that one, Country Hills, I don't think gets very little use, if anything, and it's like, people have to park out on the road, from what I understand, to use that park. I mean, there's some parks there, we could look at possibly selling the property or selling it, and using that money toward, you know, improving on the parks.
And same with Jacktown Acres, perhaps those residents would like to expand their yards. Again, even with Lions Park, Lions Park is a, it's a margin of wetlands, so to throw a quarter million dollars of the township's money into it, I mean, it's, it's still taxpayer dollars, even if we get these state grants, it's still Pennsylvania state tax, so it's not free. It's still coming out of the taxpayer pocket, so want to be accountable on that as well, but that's my two cents.
I'd just like to put it on hold, too, for, you know, for down the road and see what we come up with, as far as, you know, possibly selling the other parks and getting, you know, some additional revenue, because up there, Country Hills, that's a nice piece of property up there, you know, that, that could, you know, you could acquire some money from there, and the other ones are, you know, basically in wetland areas, you know.
Plus, plus you have Marketing Manor Park, that probably could be sold.
Well, Marketing Manor, yeah, right.
Probably somebody who definitely wanted to buy that.
There's some other small parks, I, there's another one, I can't think of where it's at, offhand, but...
Sunset Valley.
Sunset Valley, yeah.
And, you know, over the years, you know, we have commissioners fought back and forth at each other and everything, but, you know, we have maintained the budget, we have not raised taxes for over twenty years, probably, since Rich Gray was on the commissioner. And I don't want to see us going through all this budget stuff here, just for the parks and everything else that Dwayne did bring up, to raise taxes on people. Now, I might not be here next year, or four years, or eight years, but I don't want to see us put some, the next set of commissioners in a bind where they have to raise taxes. So I'm all for just putting it on hold for now.
All, all we're going to do is put the burden on senior citizens, and like the school district doing, they're, they're just beating them poor people up, I feel bad for them as senior citizens.
No, I think the township has to take a look as to whether we're going to go towards that community-based park and have two or three parks that really have all our features, or like we said, we're going to try to maintain every facility, which has labor costs, has maintenance costs, so some just discuss it with the board.
I think you brought up a good point about the, the community park versus the neighborhood park. I think the neighborhood parks were probably very much used, prominent, probably...
Twenty, thirty years ago.
Twenty, thirty years ago, where kids would go out and play and be gone all day, and then come back home for dinner, where more likely now, parents aren't allowing that to happen, where they'll drive their kid to the park and be there with them. So I do agree with a lot of the sentiment here, and I was for more so, like what Dwayne says, some of the infrastructures that we can actually upgrade for the more community-based parks, that will get more bang for a buck, and seeing us plan and spend that money out of our budget yearly versus trying to earmark some of these large projects, even, some residents caught about it, not trying to hit the dog park, I know, that was a big thing a lot of people talked about, but just like even to insurance liability of having a bunch of dogs run around unleashed and getting along, you know, even causing a problem. I know that was a, it seemed was a big puller for some of the community input, but I don't know how much bang for a buck are we going to get out of a dog park, or things of that nature.
Plus the upkeep, you know, I mean, yeah, they're going to have to pick up their dog's poo. You know, I mean, yeah, they're gonna have to pick up their dog's poop.
If they do.
But when they urinate, you gotta spray, you gotta clean, same as the goose problems we have down at Indian Lake. There's upkeep costs.
Maybe a way to kind of appease both is, I think currently Indian Lakes, we allow dogs starting October 31st or November 1st, pushing it up a month further, a month behind. This way, that's a place people could take their pets, because most people aren't truly using the parks mid-October, late October, and it, again, offers you that multipurpose. But as you just mentioned, there's pet cleanup.
We have, you know, one of the improvements we made up to Indian Lake, or not Indian Lake, I'm sorry, Ocolo, thanks to Jeff and Andy, is getting sewage up there. That's a huge thing. I mean, you know, that way, if they decide to put, you know, place up there by the soccer fields and restrooms that, you know, you already, it's a natural gravity flow going down, so, and we can have that down at the ones down below, and you don't have to sit there and smell, you know, the awful smell you smell when you go to bathroom there.
I believe that's in the budget for this year.
It is. It's a fee and lieu project. Then the trails on Lions Park are both fee and lieu projects.
That's all I'm saying.
I guess you kind of have a consensus with the board, I wouldn't say table this, but, you know, obviously use the plan. I think you got a lot of great information, feedback from the plan, but try to incrementally put that in future budgets instead of having the lump sum of four phases.
No, your message is clear, and I will say that I kind of came in at the back end of this planning process, I'm carrying the water for it, but, you know, we definitely wouldn't waste the master plan that we have. We can incrementally fund it through our budget without taking, you know, a substantial, you know, burden of, you know, $250,000 over, you know, $125,000 a year for two years. So I understand that, and I'll get back, and we will come back with a plan to continue to improve the parks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the next item, and I put it on your daisies today, is the Fee Ordinance Resolution to amend our fee ordinance. In taking a look at our fee ordinance when we were doing some of our intergovernmental cooperations, our fees haven't been adjusted since 2005. And I'm proposing, and the ordinance does allow us to do through resolution, to one is the engineering, township engineer fee was $48 in the current ordinance. Our current cost is roughly $70 an hour when you load in a full-loaded wage of benefits, retirement in our cost. So I'd like to have that adjusted to $70. And then our public works fees, it was a very convoluted way, we kind of guessed what each machinery and operator would cost, and our labor rate was at $25 an hour. Our operator rate right now is over $30 an hour and simply in salary. So, you know, the $40 an hour is actually taking salary, benefits, taxes, retirement, and then, you know, a small, you know, 5% administrative charge to get us to $40 an hour for any labor. And what I'm proposing for our equipment rates is that we use this current FEMA schedule. The FEMA puts out a schedule every few years, they update it, and it's generally accepted through insurance companies, business government, so it'll give us a rate, and they have everything from a chainsaw to a helicopter, you know, under the rate structure. So no matter what we use, it's there. And even the helicopters is single chopper, the big double blades, if we want to move something. So what that will do is kind of take the guessing away. We can actually charge something that nobody can challenge. We've used this in other places where we've had an ordinance, so if the fire department has to sit on a state highway waiting for a record, you know, a major thing, you know, the insurance company pays those rates simply because they're FEMA rates, they're not challenged. So I'd like to, you know, if the board would, you know, see fit to put that on to update the fee ordinance to reflect our true labor costs.
Looks good.
All right, thank you. And lastly, every couple of months, I like to give you a technology update, and it's It's refreshing, I talked to a manager today who's having problems just trying to get a transfer to pay the bills from their savings, is, you know, as this was alluded to in the last conversation, we've invested a lot into our technology, tracer, with the new accounting system coming back from a DOS system from the 80s to modern. But what I'd like to say is right now, we're probably working at 100% staff capacity. We are doing business as usual, everything we need to do to be a municipality, but at the same time, we have parks, public works, planning, working on tracer, we have our administrative staff learning, a new accounting package, and at the same time, we're switching our bank accounts over. So we are, you know, doing a lot of positive that's gonna make our work a lot more efficient. And as I sat with two staff today, one from planning, one from the finance, they both used the same Ward that kind of sometimes you forget whenever you're implementing new technology, they have to unlearn decades of work, decades of work processes, they're unlearning to be able to do this. When the consultant came in who's doing our accounting, she goes, "Do you realize it takes you five steps to do a check?" And they said, "Well, to me, that's what I learned." So, you know, I don't realize how cumbersome it is to do one step to do a check with the new system. So it's just, I do want to, you know, basically give kudos to our staff that are putting forth, you know, some of the people such as planning are more apt to technology, but as we're putting, you know, tablets and, you know, technology into our labor force, which, you know, sometimes a phone is challenging, they're learning the process. Jonathan, as our technology coordinator, is taking the time to train people. It is, the synergies right now with our staff to get this new technology implemented is very positive, and, you know, we want to thank you for putting the money in and approving the funds for it, so we want to make sure we get that work product out to you. But that's, everything is going good. We should be live with our new financial system as of March 1st, the start of the quarter, or April 1st, and then tracer is probably gonna, you know, it's gonna be implemented very quickly in the next months for all the departments to use. So we're spending your money wisely, but at the same time, becoming a much more efficient workforce. And that's all I have. I'll answer any questions that may still be out there.
Anything for Manager Sylka? Thank you. Planning and engineering topics, Mr. Blanco?
There's one plan before you tonight, coming from the Planning Commission. This is an expansion at Innovative Carbide on Parker Drive in the industrial park. That building currently spans two lots, and they are going to purchase the lot to the east to utilize that for parking. That's the area shown in purple on this plan. They propose to add 16,450 square feet to their building to expand operations. It will displace and move some of the parking over, so they would like to add additional parking on that lot all the way to the east. They will do onsite stormwater management as required by DEP because that is a high-quality watershed, and they would like to consolidate all three lots into one parcel, so we don't have the problem we have now with the building spanning the property line. The Planning Commission recommends that for approval. There were some engineering comments, they came in with revisions Monday, we're going through those to make sure they're all addressed. The other big condition would be that they get approval for their erosion control and stormwater plans from the county and the state.
Any questions for Mr. Blanco?
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Not seen any old business on the agenda today. Any further board comments?
Motion to approve, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All in favor by standing aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Meeting adjourned at 7:38.